To order. Again, at seven o'clock, all members are present. Third on your money agenda is hear from the public.
George, this is Deb Lee. I'm here with my husband George Lee from Westford Hill Road. And he'd like to make a quick statement if he could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi Bill.
Evening George.
I'd like to ask if you guys have on your agenda coming up today, discussion of the Connecticut Public Act twenty-two dash thirty-four, section thirty-three with regard to the property tax exemption for the veterans effective October first of this year. Thank you.
George, it is not on the agenda. I know you and I have corresponded. We're waiting for a report from Lynn Lieberg, our assessor on implementation. And our intention is to proceed with that. Well, my intention is to proceed with that and take an active recommendation on that. Once we get that report from Mrs. Lieberg.
Okay, Bill. Thank you very much.
I will say that our board has always and will continue to support our veterans. And I think such a cause in principle is very important and will certainly, I'm assuming when the time comes, we'll be supporting wholeheartedly.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks for joining us tonight. It's nice seeing you folks. Mike, any comment? I see you there.
Yes, thank you. Mike Panic, owner of a cottage at eighteen Viewpoint Drive on Lake Jaffe. This is my first Board of Selectment meeting with the town, but has been many board meetings at many towns in my lifetime. As a taxpayer and a property owner, I have some concerns about some of the town functions and processes. And I would like to bring them to the Board of Selectmen's attention, if I may. Let me ask, is there a time limit? Because I have a couple of pages I'd like to read and I don't want to. I mean, probably like five minutes, ten minutes. Is that allowed?
Normally, we allow three minutes, but if you could hold it to three to five, we'll bear with you.
Okay, I'll read fast and I'll be happy to give a transcript to the board post-meeting of the email.
Very good. We'll make those a part of our minutes.
Okay, great. First, at last week's planning and zoning meeting, short-term rentals was on the agenda for a property at Lake Jaffe. In my opinion, several items were discussed by no less than ten people, all from the public in opposition to the property in question. Again, ten people who were opposed to the special permit for short-term rental. And while the eight-person commission listened to the concerns of which some were actual factual questions on the thing, they did not consider them. And the motion was passed six to two in favor, with one of the two no votes coming from a Lake Jaffe resident who was on the board, who understood and listened, and again, agreed with the concerns of the folks.
Mike, just to interrupt you quickly, are we, was the subject matter the Airbnb?
Yes, the short, they call it short-term rentals, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's just.
No problem. Again, I'm trying to read fast, but I'm happy to provide the transcript.
Go, go ahead.
Just to be care, just to be clear, as I believe anyone, as a citizen, has the right to go to the planning and zoning appeal process, thinking there may have been an error in judgment by the planning and zoning. I emailed the planning and zoning office to ask and was told I could take it to Superior Court with my questions. I was shocked by that response and as the following was ignored or spoken off by the commission that night, the applicant at the lakefront, one, the applicant at the lakefront checked not applicable on his application if this was in a water course area. Well, it's a lakefront property, so I would assume that that's in a water course area and would be regulated by the wetlands in some way, shape or form. Two, they constructed a driveway on the property to comply for their application for a special permit, but they had no permit to put the driveway in, in the first place, and their driveway currently does not meet the town regulation for width in the code. Three, the application showed pictures of a bedroom with six-foot-high ceilings and a staircase to an illegal loft bedroom with no railings. Again, should these special permits be subject to some minimal standards? Building Department checks. I know that Airbnb doesn't check. This is a life safety issue and should be considered. When asked who will monitor the allotted three rental per six months, the commission had no answer except that it said at the start of the meeting that maybe the town had not had enough info in the regulations to deal with this new fad, short-term rentals. Five, the LCIA, Lake Jaffe Improvement Association, had submitted a letter which was dropped in the box at Town Hall that was not entered or read into the record at the meeting. That letter was dropped off on Thursday, November eleventh, three full days before the meeting. On the website, it states that that box is checked three times a daily. I believe it must have been missed. Also, I am aware of two other letters that were not read into the record that night that were in opposition. Again, I think a mistake by the commission. Six, finally, the Lake Jaffe Association is a private lake community and homes have deed restrictions chartered by the state of Connecticut. One is that no one can use their home for a business. And this issue was totally dismissed by the commission that night, a point that dumbfounded me that this was not considered because renting your house out for profit is definitely a business that happens in your house. And why would anyone have deed restrictions on their property if somebody can simply go to the town and have them overrule? Again, I was dumbfounded by this. I asked that the Board of Selectmen research this situation for me and the many residents of LCIA that are concerned about our community and the town of Ashford and this new fad of short-term rentals.
I have one question. This is Catherine.
Sure.
Um, who was it that told you you had to go to Superior Court?
The, I try not to use names because I don't like to throw people under the bus, be very honest.
I'd like the name, I would like the name if someone told you to go to Superior Court.
It was the planning and zoning officer, I believe his name is Michael. He's a zoning enforcement officer. I don't know his name off the top of my head.
Did he say why you needed to go to Superior Court?
He said that I asked if there was an appeal process because I've, I own commercial real estate all over the state of Connecticut. And when something doesn't appear right at the planning and zoning meeting, there's a ten-day, usually a ten-day window where you can file an appeal, whether you're opposed or for an application to appeal the process. And I was told via email, and I can certainly copy you on the email from the zoning enforcement officer whose name escapes me at this moment, but I believe it's Michael.
I think we, we know who that is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We, we know who that is. It would be great if you did send an email with this information in it along with, um, along with anything you got as a response.
Okay.
So that we could, so that we have something that we can actually look at.
Absolutely. I'll include the short letter that I just read. The second thing that I wanted to discuss, and again, I'll just use one minute on this, is with the town building department. There are no, there were no less than four major renovations happening at Lake Jaffe that either had no permits or permits for something like a window replacement where the whole house was gutted. When the LCIA brought this to the attention of the building department, the email reply from the person at the building department, and again, I don't use the names, but I'll be happy to forward the email, said that we needed to bring more proof that, that there was activity. When we submitted pictures, documentation, the people were building decks, the previous application for short-term rentals, built a huge deck on this house, put a driveway in, we had at least two homes that were gutted to the studs and rebuilt from scratch. So I'm not sure how much proof we needed to bring to the town, but buildings departments are supposed to work. A building inspector is supposed to at least do a drive-by to see what's happening when a complaint is registered. And if there's unpermitted work, should probably issue a cease and止 letter until it is rectified. Now, I'm not saying that people are doing shoddy work, but you can't rip your house down to the studs and rebuild the whole thing from scratch and not have a building permit or have a billing permit that says you're replacing windows. That's just uncalled.
It would be, it would be great if we had the addresses you're talking about.
Absolutely. And we brought, and I'll show you the email that we sent to the town and the reply we got from the town building official about that. Now, again, doing a little research, I understand that there's some sort of a community building effort where the town of Ashford uses a out-of-town building inspector, but I mean, that's just not an excuse for not complying with rules and regulations. I mean, that's just, it's just a safety matter and especially if people are going to start now that the floodgates are open with this Airbnb, there's another application for an Airbnb at Lake Jaffe. There's three that are already operating that we weren't even aware of until we did our own research on the first one that tried to go to the planning and zoning. And at planning and zoning, the Ashford Lake president of that association was there. They're having the same problem. And I think this is a big problem. I mean, we, myself, I bought two cottages at Lake Jaffe because I thought I was buying on Golden Pond. And I'm really fearful now knowing that this particular application that I discussed, they bought this strictly as an Airbnb. They had no intention in living in the house ever. And if they're only going to rent it three times in a six-month period, what's going to happen to the house the rest of the time? They can only rent it six times a year on short-term basis. I just, the whole thing to me doesn't make a lot of sense and I would appreciate if I supply the information to you via email. So I'm looking into both the P and Z Commission and the, the building department and how they're handling complaints about building permits.
Mike, just re, just to reiterate, if you would submit all of that documentation, including your letter, we will certainly carry this on our next agenda and look into it in the interim. I did notice, and I believe it may be relevant, although we're in the public segment of this, it's not on our agenda for tonight. But John, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I apologize for, for the interruption, but I perhaps I could shed just a little bit of light. So for Mr.
Just for Mike's, right, information, maybe you could identify yourself, John?
Right. As I was going to say, I, my name is John Gaskowski. I am the, the partner of Mike Tomato, who is the contract zoning officer for the town of Ashford. He and I work together under Taike Planning and Policy Group, and we are land use specialists. I, just, just by way of clarification, looking at your zoning regulations, short-term rentals, Airbnbs are special permit uses for the Lake Jaffe area. And by state statute, a, an appeal, a concern with the decision of a planning and zoning commission and a special permit matter is appealable to, to Superior Court. This is as opposed to a, a regular zoning decision, which is an administrative procedure that would go to the zoning board of appeals. But a special permit, which was the decision made in the case of the short-term rental on Lake Jaffe, the appeal period is to Superior Court. So that was a correct piece of information.
That's a process we can't change.
That's state statute.
Okay, it does say in the, you know, with all due respect, it does say in the planning and zoning regulations that before you get a special permit, you're supposed to get a zoning permit, which at the meeting, everyone at the call was said that a special permit takes the place of a zoning permit and a zoning permit is not needed. So I, it seems to me like you kind of avoid any kind of an appeal if you go right to the special permit. I just, I don't understand.
A special permit is actually a higher level of standard. And it only occurs, a, a regular zoning permit is an as-of-right use, like building a house on a residential lot. And that would be a straightforward administrative use. And if someone is aggrieved and has standing, they can appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. But a special permit is a higher standard, which does take the place of a zoning permit. That is, that part is correct. But it is a much higher level of scrutiny and therefore requires a public hearing, which is probably what you attended and several of your neighbors. A regular zoning permit does not require a public hearing. And, and therefore it does, again, by state statute, go to Superior Court if you are aggrieved.
Thank you for clarifying, John.
Thanks, John. So Mike, we'll look forward to receiving that documentation from you. Certainly take your comments seriously. We'll include it on our next agenda for the Board of Selectmen and certainly ask if Mike has to join us or whatever, although John absolutely represented, you know, that side of it fairly well here, but we'll get more in-depth explanation for you and look forward to talking further on this.
Also, if I also, Mike, if I also understood you correctly, one of the comments you made was that we have someone who is an out-of-town person who is doing this. What we have are highly qualified, a highly qualified person doing this, and that is a, an employee of the town. We, we contract for those services. So this is not something where having a person in town would have made the difference. It's really more along the lines of being able to have somebody who's very, very knowledgeable. We pay them for their service and generally do a pretty good job.
Yeah. And again, I just want to clarify, I, in no way, shape or form was I trying to disrespect anybody or tell anybody they weren't doing their job. It's just that whether it's a town employee or a contracted employee of the town, there's nobody in town or at the town hall that's going to tell me you can rip your house down to the studs and rebuild it without a permit. It's just, it's just not, I, I come from a building background. I own commercial real estate. It's just, it's unacceptable.
And do you know if that was reported to the building department that that was going on?
Yes, the, the Lake Jaffe Association sent all of the addresses, all of the work that was happening and pictures.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate the allotment of more than three minutes.
No problem. Item four is for Selectmen's briefing. I'm glad to announce the Boll Mill Bridge has been substantially completed and is open for traffic. Once again, we've informed both the town of Eastford and the town of Union of that, as well as our own fire service. Our Public Works Department did an excellent job on that. As you may recall, when this first happened a bit over a month ago, we were told that that road may have had to be closed for a year. We work closely with our engineer from a council of government with, we notified Fish and Waterways with Deep and also our inland wetland who treated this as a, an emergency repair. And I'd just like to thank everybody that was involved in that, particularly to our highway department to work diligently to get it completed in a safe manner. So it is open. The only thing that, if any of you take a ride down there, you'll notice we, they, they put up concrete abutments in lieu of guardrails right now because we won't be able to do those properly until the spring, but it is passing, so.
Uh, Bill, Bill, could you indulge me for a minute? I just wanted to give Mike Panic a little more information. If I, is that okay with you, Bill?
Yeah, it's okay. If we want to discuss this much longer though, I'd suggest we add it to.
No, no, I just wanted to point out, I think you, Mike, I think you said that letters were dropped off on the eleventh.
Correct.
Offices are closed on Thursdays. That was the eleventh, and they were also closed the next day. So anything would have, that would, could have been looked at, would have been looked at on Monday and the agenda was already set for that meeting, which was Monday night. So that's some of the timing, but offices are definitely closed on Thursdays and they were closed on that Friday.
Thank you.
That's all, Bill.
Okay. November twelfth, we had our Veterans Appreciation Ceremony at the Veterans Memorial. They had a very nice turnout. We had somewhere between thirty and forty people in attendance. A special tribute was made to the late Leon Gardner and also one of our few remaining World War II veterans who was on it, there, George Salati. And turned out, and I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in that, it turned out to be a very nice morning. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be on Sunday, December fourth at four-thirty. Santa will be there. The Babcock Band will be performing. As usual, soup and coffee. The difference between now and the past three years is that now that COVID's over, we will be doing a lot of those festivities within Oakdale Mall. So I encourage everybody to participate. Should be a nice evening. Point information for the board, I had a brief meeting with Melissa, our social service director today. And unfortunate to report, our fuel assessment program request have already matched or gone above what the entirety was for last year. And the winter has just begun. I have asked her how she's doing with the funds that we've appropriated from ARPA. And she's going to give us, give me an update, which I will pass on to you. She said, it looks like we're in pretty good shape right now, but I've asked her to try to give us an estimate exactly where she is. Most of those funds have been done. Well, not most of them, but a good share of those funds are being given to people who have run out of oil, don't have the money to even order a minimal payment from, or delivery from one of the oil distributors. So it's going to be an ongoing situation that we're going to have to watch very closely. Temporary help for the land use office will start tomorrow. As you know, Katie is expecting a blessing that's due around Thanksgiving. But babies don't know that date, so she had to take today off because of some discomfort in her, but should be a nice Christmas present for us all. And I'll keep you posted. The temporary help, of course, will fall within the definition of temporary help, not to exceed ninety days in any given year. I did clear it with the union. The hourly rate for that is nineteen dollars an hour. Presently, the clerk position pays twenty-five dollars an hour. But of course, anybody coming in, there's no benefits whatsoever, holidays, whatever, paid holidays.
Bill, have we identified a person for that?
We have, really, I, I've had actually four people who had expressed an interest. Although two, I understand one of them has found other employment, permanent employee. Another one who just happened to be Katie's mom has decided not to take that.
Doesn't it have to be a union employee?
It does not. It does not. I cleared that before I talked to anybody.
Okay, thank you.
A temporary basis is exempt from that, Catherine. I've also, and I, it's with regret to let you know, but I've also been advised by our public works supervisor that he will be retiring no later than next July. So what I'm going to want to do with our board is start looking at the job description that we're presently under. Chris has already been doing some research for me. I'm getting some other job descriptions and that. And as I get them in, I'll pass them to, to you, Catherine and Roger, take a look. I think, I don't know if you're familiar with the existing job description, but it is
Very.
woefully inadequate. So that's all I have for that. Any questions or anything? Hearing none, we'll go to item five, acceptance of the minutes of the following meeting, November seventh.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Are there any amendments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, saying aye.
Right.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, hear from the boards, commissions, or committees. Hear from boards, commissions, or committees. Hear from boards, commissions, or committees. Hearing none, we'll move on, old business. The Ashford Advisory School Committee. As you folks may or may not be aware, we just recently received a updated cost from Friar, who's our architects working on the roof replacement. And we're advised that that figure has increased now to four million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. We're looking at a sixty to sixty-three percent reimbursement from the state on that. Once that is completed, that figure does not include soft costs. So I'm assuming we're going to end up probably going for bonding in the area of five hundred thousand dollars. We're working closely with our bond counsel for advice on that. I expect to have more information for you no later than our next meeting. Item B, status of the after-school program. Dave Frostin has joined us. Sherry York may be joining us. She had a conflict with another meeting. Dave is here and Dave, do you want to just give us a brief overview of what you've given us and hopefully it'd be available for some questions that I believe the board is going to have.
I, what I've done was sort of developed a program.
I'm sorry, you're a little hard to hear.
Okay, I'll move closer.
Want to?
Yeah. Okay, what I've done was I set up a proposal of an after-school program, which I submitted to the three selectmen. In it, I have broken down in different areas, the cost of the program, what it would be, what it would cover, hours of operation, forms that must be completed by the parents, staff, example of staff duties and responsibilities, potential grants, if we look into, if we look at state grants that might be available to us, payments, accountability, which covers the payment of salaries that go along with it, along with the snacks program and also supplies that's needed, such as art supplies, anything that would assist in with the recreational part of the program. Also, I broke down some, developed some spreadsheets, which actually gives a covers some of the cost. It shows how I did it and, and show, also show the actual cost of the program. Also, at the end of the proposal, what I made was a couple of recommendations, and I'll just read them out to you. Recommendation was establish a panel for feedback for improvement of the program. Panel will meet periodically because there's two parents, a staff member, and representatives from the town. I also added a recommended cost. And everything is based upon fifteen students at a ten-to-one student ratio. Some individuals had asked me, what about kindergarten? And the ratio at that point would be the eight-to-one ratio if we also have kind of kindergartens involved in the program itself.
Is, um, a quick question. Is that ratio, are those ratios consistent with other towns that have this kind of program in place?
Uh, yes. Um, we looked at the Coventry and also we looked at Westbrook. It's both in, in both with the same program. Also in the Connecticut State statutes, when I looked at it and also had it in there, a ten-to-one ratio for first grade and above. And if you add kindergartens, it has to be eight-to-one ratio at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, you and I have talked about these questions before, but I'm just going to kind of reiterate it for transparency sake, so we're all kind of on the same page. And obviously, the selectmen can speak for themselves. There are several concerns that we have and want to be proactive on those concerns and not necessarily learn by ongoing experience. One would be the administering of the staff and the reporting there. I, I know at one time Sherry had indicated she felt she could do it. I'm not sure we're convinced with the workload she personally has and as busy as she is that that's possible. Do you have an alternative? Do you have any thoughts regarding that?
First, I'll go over the responsibility and I'll give you a sort of a roundabout answer. What the program's going to entail on, on the accounting side of it is an individual that has some sort of accounting background. Basically, what they'll be doing is accepting checks from parents. They have to register the child for a particular period of daycare that they're setting up for. Also, that they have to coordinate with the payroll company right now that is also part of this, is a contract with Common Sense Payroll out of Pomeroy. And so they have to coordinate with that. And so they have to coordinate with them. Um also, they have to set up a schedule, um also reinforce the um programs. Rules and guideline regulations, and that's it. Overall.
When you say the uh that same person, that accountant role would be doing that?
Yes.
They would be enforcing what kinds of rules and regulations?
Uh just making sure that we'll say, for instance, I'll give you an idea that if a parent. Um picks up their child late after six o'clock, we'll say they pick up their child um at six fifteen, six thirty. Three times uh within two weeks, there has to be something, some sort of um. Oh, what I um. Something has to be done at that point. Part of the part of the proposal is to develop a late fee for every fifteen minutes that the parent is late for picking up the child. So if the if there's a. A constant behavior of coming in late, then that person who's um a part of the um. Program has to sit down with the parent and also explain to the parent that this is unacceptable. And there may be some. Um oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Something.
Penalty?
Thank you. Some penalty has to be done besides the monetary about monetary uh part of it. Um the reason for it, we just can't have a um one of the staff members staying past six o'clock. On a regular basis, just because of this one particular parent or that doesn't want to follow the rules and regulations.
That's interesting, because I don't, when I think about the accountant, an accountant role, I can see that person handling payments. I can see that person establishing what the late fee should be, but I cannot imagine them having conversations with parents about. You know, uh about this, because all of that would be have been stated upfront and be in whatever form of contract was put out there.
It would be, it would be part, the package will be given to a parent. Uh prior to the parent. Prior to the parents sending the child to the after care after care program. That they have to be aware, they have to sign off on it, they have to be aware that these are the rules or regulations. Um and so forth.
I would expect that the person that you have um lead leading the program would be the one who would have a conversation with the parent.
Yes.
Not not the accountant.
Well, it depends on how we how we. We as a group set up the program itself.
Okay.
Um because can we'll say right now, um I'll throw, I'll just throw this out. Sherry, when she runs a program like basketball, the parents will sign up with her.
That's a whole different thing.
Yeah, they will send the checks in. Um if there's any problems with the child during the uh program itself, it will be Sherry actually talking to the parent. Um and so forth.
That's for the programs that Sherry is.
I would think instead of using the term accountant, it would be an accounting function.
Yes.
Okay, that of the particular thing, I mean, I don't think we need an accountant.
No, not.
We certainly need somebody that's going to be tracking hours, tracking late time, early times, general administration of. Of the staff that we're going to have watching these children.
I think that how you just said is a lot better.
Okay, so the way it's being described infers that that person would be there. Um when in accounting role, you wouldn't necessarily have to have the person there, they would be getting information from whatever the sign in and sign outs are.
Right.
Um uh and I would expect that the people who are there doing that are working there would be the ones who are actually doing the sign in and sign out, so the times would be accurate. Um and then they would provide that information to the person performing the accounting function, and that person would be recording it wherever it needs to be recorded, and the pay would be. You know, whatever fees, uh I'm going to call it.
Yeah, common sense.
Okay, so I have a I have another question. What is the vetting process going to be for people to work there?
We have to sit um, we have to sit down and um set up a exactly what we're looking for. Uh we have to go similar, the the person looking for it, one has to be an adult. Um ha- and that person has to have some sort of background in childcare. And um as previous, um Bill and I, we spoke. Um the state regulation states that the um adult has to be twenty-one years and above. Uh we we look at it, probably the person should be a lot older than that, twenty-one. Um but has some sort of background.
You're talking about the lead position.
Uh the lead position and.
For the lead position, are you saying that for every person who is working in this this?
Two, the um working, the lead person and the assistant uh should be an adult based upon the state statutes. Uh they have to be, um the lead person has to be there sixty percent of the time. And the assistant has to be there forty percent of the time. Now, the helper as defined in the statute, it states that could be sixteen years or above. Um but we're looking at somebody that's old, go ahead.
So I didn't ask about the qualifications. What I asked about was what will the vetting process be for these people? In other words, are they going to run a police background check?
There's so, there's no doubt about it. Anytime that you work with the.
I don't see anything laid out yet.
Yeah, anytime you work with a child, anything that deals with the child, you will be vetted. You will be a plate, a background check will be conducted on that. Um I, from my understanding, the town has a company that they go through. But as myself, as being a peril myself, um I would, I had to go through the state police. And also through uh another company also.
All right, so I would expect that that would get laid out as to how background checks are going to work.
Yes.
The other thing I just wanted to say in passing is. Um some time ago, when this was first being discussed on social media. Uh there was someone who came out uh and was saying that they're uh they'd had an infant. And now, and their kids were now, the other kids were now in school and was thinking that this person would. Um try uh have one of these roles. My expectation would be that. Uh if someone's coming to watch people's children and interact with them, that they're not bringing extra kids from home.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's um there's, that person is going to be. That person cannot bring any uh any of their kids with them, they're technically unemployed. If they have to work up by what the kids they have in front of them. There's no ifs and buts on that. Also part of the program, um it was brought, uh somebody had asked me, can we drop off students? The answer is absolutely not. You cannot drop a student off, the student has to attend school prior to the program.
And that would actually, that would um. Negate having kids who are doing, I can't remember kindergartens all day. Or if it's morning and it's it's all day.
Yes.
Okay, and there's nothing that we would not have children that are younger than kindergarten age, is that correct?
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
David, uh based on the numbers that you've been able to put together, say these are the working numbers. If I have a child that's going to take part in this program, three to six in the afternoon.
Correct.
What's it going to cost?
Right now, our.
We're not going to, I know there are still some things in here.
Right. Um. Based upon fifteen kids, we're looking at a raw cost of approximately thirteen dollars per child. Um per day. Um that's. I can't remember, uh I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Here's your.
Okay. All right, so total cost uh for fifteen students per week is seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents. That's based upon. I believe um sixteen dollars an hour for the lead person. And I believe is fifteen dollars for the assistant. Um if we go up. Um as per the state regulations are ten to one, if we exceed twenty, then we're looking at hiring a a third person. And that person, based upon minimum wage in state of Connecticut, that person would be fifteen dollars an hour at that point.
Will there be a nurse on site?
No, there will not be a nurse on site, but however, there's going to be emergency protocol established. Um also that in the event that something happens to a child, a injury report has to be. Um completed. And the injury report has to be submitted to the parent. Has to be submitted to the town and also kept on file and also one to the employee who completes the. Um the injury report.
I would expect that if you don't have a nurse on site, a medical person on site, that the people who are hired need to have.
That's.
Taken training.
Yes.
And taking taken CPR, et cetera, et cetera.
And they they have to take CPR um on that, they have to uh they have to take a training class there. And also one of the things that were um I also put into the proposal, they have to be certified in EpiPen. But now what today nowadays that with the different allergies, EpiPen is a common thing, so um we're looking at that too. Now, the question's coming down is that if the event, if one of the child need a EpiPen, how are we going to store it? Well, we'll store it in a medical kit, um that's what we'll have on site. Um and that will just keep a open communication with the parent itself um itself. And um I'm going to take it from there.
Have the costs for the uh training of the personnel been included in your overall overarching?
No.
Cost summary, you need to include those as well.
Right now.
And you can expect, and you can expect there'll be some turnover, so as new people come on. We'll have to uh take that into account as well, which may take it up to more than thirteen dollars per child per day, depending.
Because one of the things I also, um there's also going to be a startup cost, which is going to be exactly covering what you had stated. Um such as training and CPR, first aid, there's going to be startup costs, is that most likely will last from the town. And part of the cost that's going to be over the period in over period of time. We'll be able to pay the town back um at that point. Through the year.
I don't understand how you would pay the town back.
Meaning that is similar to what you just said, that the cost that we're covering, well, we have to have a startup cost. Uh we'll say, for instance, startup cost is fifteen hundred dollars. So we have to, I uh we have to incorporate the fifteen hundred dollars into the cost of the uh program itself. As time goes on, then that money is going to be taken out and being brought sent back to the town itself over the period of time. It's not coming at one time, okay, here's fifteen dollars, here you go. Um as ti- as a program continues, that's when the money is going to be given back on the um. Probably bi-weekly or bi-weekly or monthly basis.
So we'd have to set up for receiving those monies as well. Um on the leader and the assistant and the sixty percent of the time for the leader and forty percent for the assistant. Are those mutually exclusive? In other words, the leader is there sixty percent of the time and the other forty percent of the time the assistant is there?
No, um no, I I based it upon what the state statute stated, I just put the verbiage in there. Uh but what we're looking for is that the the lead person should be there five days a week or four days. Whatever the school week is at that point. Uh we're looking for the assistant to be there also five days a week. Um but uh based upon the statutes, I just stuck it in there. Um in in the event that they want to take, we'll say they have to have a doctor's appointment or something, they're going to be out for that particular day. We could bring the third person in, um it um it still be within the guidelines of the statute.
When you say a third person, you mean a third person to act as an assistant or leader?
As a helper at that point.
Oh, that's just a helper, you know, helpers are not the same rule, if you will, as the leader and the assistant.
Correct.
So um I would expect that either the leader or the assistant would be there all.
Yes, all the time.
Okay. Um uh would you also set up uh protocols with the fire department in the case of any kinds of emergency?
Yes.
I'm going to grab my seat back there, Dave, again.
Refrigeration, I mean, uh you talked about uh snacks and things like that. Um what what we're looking at is is going to come down to another meeting. Uh we're looking at the school itself. Um as a cafeteria manager and see if we could work something out with the cafeteria manager. In reference to the snacks, um possibly purchasing the snacks through the cafeteria itself. Such as milk, juice, uh maybe cookies, apples, bananas. Um so, you know, on that, on that order.
Please refresh my memory about um how the place will be cleaned up after each day. Because the school has janitorial services that they use, you know, normally.
Correct.
So this is, this is going to be in the cafeteria area, or is it going to be in the gym?
Right now, what we've talked about doing is um primarily in the cafeteria. Will be the.
Because it has tables.
But they will, oh, I see Sherry has just joined us, but also some use of the gym. Um I don't know how they're going to break that up or what the percentage is going to be.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so.
Nation both about about cleaning and that, I I just briefly had touched on that. Um. With the superintendent to that, and as you know, this program did exist at the school prior to this. It was a YMCA sponsored program for a little over a year, prior to that East Con was running it. And the school.
That was quite a quite a while ago, quite a while ago.
The school was able to coordinate the cleaning and that. On a time, it seemed to work out pretty.
So has the school indicated that they would handle the cleaning?
They. Well, one of the, the one of the things that part of the proposal is that uh we still have to meet with the school. Uh we have, uh by meet with the school is that we're looking at defining, making sure that we can use the cafeteria, making sure. In the event something's going on in the cafeteria, can we use another room? So there's still meetings that we have to set up and and work out. Uh because part of not only where the program's going to be held up, we know it's going to most likely be the cafeteria. We also want to discuss the fact that about the uh stack program um and so forth.
Uh-huh. Uh the materials, uh the materials that you're going to be you, that the program will use, where would they come from?
They'll be coming from, um you mean uh.
Materials for the kids to play with.
Uh rec department itself, we have um, we'll be also purchasing some games um and other things, we'll be using the basketballs. Or um. Different um games from the uh rec department.
Well, we're really not talking about the rec department running this, we're talking about the town running this.
The what?
Correct, Bill?
Well, I think that that's what we're trying to define.
ascertain.
Is is where the where the responsibilities are. Uh obviously, whether the school wants to be involved or not, they're going to have a lot of responsibility over their facilities. And uh I think overall uh oversight, reporting back to the the to the. Board of Selectmen is going to ultimately be on the rec committee's responsibility. But I, you know, the the gray areas that I don't see are things that we've touched on, like who's going to actually administer. Be the administrator over the program and and how is that pecking order going to work? I might suggest that just a couple of things, you know, the school has, we we've done preliminary discussions with them. About the use of the cafeteria, about the use of the gym, the concept, they they understand the need. Um I'm not hearing as regularly as I was from parents, but I know there are parents that have been checking in with me every month. To find out where, you know, how we're doing, what we're doing on this, because there's a need, there's no question, there's a need for the program. Uh one of my concerns, and and we can't address it until we get going on this thing, I. I think the need is probably for somewhat much greater than fifteen students or fif- you know, fifteen participants, but. We we've covered with 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 our insurance carrier that are alive.
Um, we, we've covered with, with, with our insurance carrier that our liability umbrella, um, will cover it. Uh, with no cost to the town, um, we've also, uh.
Bill, on that one, on the liability, is there a maximum amount of liability, like a million dollars, or what is it?
I, I don't wanna guess, for some reason I believe it's five million, but I don't know what the max is, we can.
That'd be good, it'd be good if we knew.
One that the, it would be under the same coverage that the school students presently have, up there, it wouldn't be any more or any less.
No, it would be, oh, so it's not town coverage, it's school coverage?
It was school, it'd be school, huh, school coverage under KERMA, same carrier.
Oh, okay, but we're the towns, but it's gonna be under the town's umbrella, so to speak.
Well, that's, that's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but the cost would not be, the, the cost would be covered, whether we're presently paying it for, under the town. Situation or the school, the cost would not go up or down as a result of this program.
No, I wasn't thinking about the cost because I already had that understanding, it was more, it's more along the lines of. How much liability coverage do we really have, um, should something terrible happen there?
Now, as I've expressed to the board, we, I know we've discussed, my, my two concerns. Our administration of the program, it's new ground for all of us. Uh, there, obviously, there's a reason that the, the YMCA from Vernon gave it up and at East Con. I've had discussions with both of them and its personnel.
Um, reliable, the reliability of personnel?
Of personnel and being able, I, I know when I talk to the folks in Vernon. They did not feel they wanted to put themselves in, in the situation, or are the children that would be involved or the parents. In something that they couldn't be relatively sure they couldn't, they would be able to perform up to those standards.
In, in a manner you're saying to be able to sustain the program.
Correct, correct, and, and, you know, while East Con would not say that specifically. Certainly all indications were that was the same problem.
Yeah.
Um, and it's our problem, and, and, and it's a big part of this problem now. I, I, you know, roughly the figures that David has, has given us. I think are a bit conservative, we're about sixty-five dollars per student per week. Um, I've talked to Stafford, uh, Springs, who's had a similar program. Much larger than ours, they have approval for up to a hundred students, they manage you with about eighty students, but it's run by the school. And basically it's financed through grants from the state, uh, very successful program. Um, I know as Sherry had pointed out, and I know Chris did some research, Coventry has a similar program, that's run by their rec department. Uh, there are a couple of other municipalities that we've looked at, but management administration of this program. Is, is my major concern, and what makes sense to me. And, and we, we've made a suggestion to the school that they administer and run the program, and.
I have to, Bill, I have to say I agree with you.
They're, they're reluctant to do that now.
Okay, it's Jack something here, one of the things I'm looking at some meet, um, um, some. A board of, um, education meeting on June twenty-eighth of this year. And one of the things that I, um, highlighted was that a Kim, I don't know how to spell her la- uh, say her last name. But it was moved to authorize the school administration to work with Ashford Parks and Recreation, just to explore. An after-school day childcare program for the children of Ashford, so.
That doesn't, that doesn't say that they're taking responsibility or that they're interested.
One of the things that, i- i- it's basically saying, how I'm interpreting it, is that they're looking. To work with us, work with us as a group and see what we can do.
I, I, I attended that meeting and, and spoke in favor of the need of the program. And, which I think is recognized by everybody, everybody that's involved.
Right.
Again, I get that I sound like a broken record to the administration of this thing, they did not wanna be involved in that, they support it. They will lend their facilities to us, they will complement that as best they can, now, my suggestion is. I'd like to set a special board of selectmen meeting, invite the superintendent, invite the chairman of the board of Ed. Sherry and David from the rec department and sit down and talk about the nitty grittys of this thing. I, to me, it, it, it makes perfect sense if we can hire. The paraprofessionals up there are, are help from their existing paraprofessionals. And it does not conflict with their union contract, we could hire them as a town employee. Similar to the way we deal with Melissa with so- social services, she works here two days a week, up at the school three days a week. We pay most of her salary with the exception of a stipend that she gets from DCF. Um, I don't see, and she's on our payroll, we cover, I, I think there's a, I've, I've also talked. To our town treasurer and, and, and the deputy treasurer. And I know Dave has done research and we encouraged him to do that with a, uh, a company that does all the salaries and the bookkeeping. Our finance office feels that hiring three extra people would not be an overburden on them and that they could do that. So.
Wait, 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 you were saying the, the finance department hiring three extra people?
No, no, us, us, the town hiring these three people is town employees.
The three people being?
The, the.
Lead.
Lead.
Assistant.
The assistant and, and it.
Okay, um.
And they would, they would be hired and paid through our normal payroll mechanism here in the town.
So what I think you're really talking about, Bill, is to have, I believe, a, a special selectmen's meeting that is a working session. Truly a working session to work out the details.
With the board of, with the board of Ed and the rec.
Absolutely, uh, and do you need a motion for that?
Well, I'll, I'll take the motion, I was, yeah, sure.
Well, I, I don't wanna jump into it, I just, I'm willing to make the motion, is there anything else that we felt?
Well, the only other thing that I, I, I started to say, I don't think I finished. To me, the simplest answer is that if we can be assured that it's not gonna conflict with their union problems. We can have a, a, a subsequent meeting after the special meeting I just suggested. With the paraprofessionals up, the paraprofessionals at the school and ask them what their thoughts are. Uh, to me, I would rather hire three people who are presently up at the school. They have all the medical training, they have the CPR training, they, they, they have the, the EpiPen training. They're dealing with these kids, they have all the background checks already in place, they have all the training that, that, that. The state is mandating or that we can foresee they're gonna need, they're there on site as it is. If that could be our resource, I would be in favor of hiring three people of equal status. And let them divide up the responsibilities of, of supervision on, given on a day-to-day basis and set up a schedule.
Okay, um, so, uh, I'm not sure, one, that all of the paras. Have all of the medical oriented training that is required, they have to, they rely on a school nurse. But, but I agree with you that should the paras be interested in doing this? They do seem like the most logical choice, uh, it's a matter of how interested are they and how reliable are they going to be? You know, I think we can work out all the other details around it, um, once we have those answers, and it's a commitment on their part.
Yeah, and I, I think the first critical step here is this coordinated meeting between our board. The superintendent, hopefully, you know, the, the, the stakeholders in this, the players.
It would be, it would be nice if we had a representative from the paras in that meeting as well.
You know, I'll, I'll defer that decision to the.
Board of Ed.
To the board of Ed and the school teacher, I, I agree, Kath, what I don't wanna do is just get ahead of ourselves, I mean, if. If, if, if I was to hear from the school and they have a rationale, why they didn't wanna go to that stuff, I don't wanna put them in the middle either.
Good point.
And I'd like to do that, and I'd like to do that next week with a special meeting.
Okay.
I don't, Sherry, you haven't had any comments or Dave, I mean, what do you think of that idea?
No, I, I support it, um, I believe that we should get the all, like you said. All the players involved, this, get everybody together in one room and. See, yeah, exactly, use his words, hash it out.
Let's make sure that in doing that, that we have a full package that we can give to them. Everybody's got the same thing, it's got all the details of everything's been worked out so far, because you've done a lot of work. To, to pull information together, so that everybody's looking at the same thing while we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, we, 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 we can put something together, Sherry, any thoughts?
Um, I'm, uh, enjoying the conversation and, uh, liking most of what I'm hearing. Um, I. Haven't talked or pursued personally with many of the paras, uh. But Melissa had a strong sense that she didn't think many would be interested in it.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that we're not completely relying on paras, that we're also opening to hiring outside of the school if we need to.
Yep.
I think, I agree that it would be ideal if they wanted to do it. I just think that their day already starts at eight thirty and they get off at three fifteen and no, they don't wanna stay three more hours.
It's a long day.
A long day, yes.
Well, I, I certainly am not gonna argue with any of those points, but, but I've also talked to some of the administration up there. Who think there are paralegals, a paraprofessional would be interested, so that obviously that was, that's something we've gotta do research on.
Right, perhaps, Bill, something could be worked out with their school schedule where maybe they were staggered, maybe they came in at noon on. Some days or something, you know, I don't know exactly what their requirement would be.
Union contract.
Would be completely different.
Change it.
Contract.
No, they, I'm sure they already have responsibilities and times that they're supposed to be there to meet those responsibilities for the students. So I don't know that it'd be that easy to switch them around, so to speak, to come in at, say, noon. Um, but, uh, but again, Bill, as you were saying, you know, holding, having a special meeting, getting all the players together. That are appropriate to at least hash out, making sure we've got covered all the details we think we need to cover. And then it's a matter of, you know, sourcing the staff for it.
Yep, yep, well, I'll, I'll proceed accordingly, we'll pick out a date. Uh, hopefully, one day, uh, earlier part of next week. And, uh, but providing we have documentation, we're all satisfied, at least that we're gonna be able to sit down and go over with. Um, I think we've got the basis of it in front of us, but we.
Do you think we need?
To that.
Do, do you think we need that to be an in-person meeting?
Um, yes, I, I like in-person meetings, but.
When you ask the school, just ask them what they.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I get the impression that the superintendent likes in-person meetings, the only thing that I, I'd like. The chairman to be able to participate, and I don't know what her situation is.
Very good, yes, she should, she must participate, I, I don't think we should have it without her.
You know, I, I also think, and this is too early for that, but we ought to reach a point. Where we're gonna have a committee together on this to initiate it, there should be some sort of parent participation. And get some input directly from a parent or two on, on what we're doing.
Good.
Uh, we can look at it from our perspective, but most of our parenting days are behind us, except for Sherry's.
So, Bill, 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 I don't think we need a motion for you to set up a special selectmen's meeting.
I, I don't either, I mean, I have no objection to it, but I don't think. I'll proceed accordingly and, and, and try to put together a, a package that. We can disperse and let the board of Ed go look at it too, um, so we don't sit there, try to hash out particular language or whatever, but. I'll proceed to, to go ahead and put together a special meeting and invite everybody, we've already discussed.
Good.
All right, any further discussions or questions?
Uh, Dave, uh, Sherry, thank you.
Yes, thank you both, I know you're working hard on this, all right, we will move on here. Uh, street lighting, I'm still working on.
Bill, it's been on there for going on, what, a year and a half for all of us? Is it worth keeping it there?
It is, it is, I'm, I'm, Catherine, I wanna take a hard line on it, it's gonna be there until I get that light up there. Like J V and that, the transfer station, one way.
Okay.
I may go string Christmas lights up there, I'm not sure, something.
Let me know if you need help.
I did have a, a, a discussion with Jonathan Farigno today, um, about that subject. And he's gonna get strongly involved in it, so I'm not giving up on it yet.
Okay.
America, uh, item D, American Rescue Plan, discuss and interact on scheduling of a public hearing. Slash the, uh, special town meeting, as you know, there were a few things, well, one in particular that we left off the last agenda that we. Inadvertently did, and that was the, uh, additional funding for the fire department, the radio sets. Um, since then, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review the request that we received, um, from the chief. But they would like, uh, us to request fifty thousand from ARPA funds to replace a service truck. Um, that's badly in need of, of replacement. Um, the other is, we had requested some time ago, and I believe, uh, both you folks got it in your packages. Um, EDC put together a program, um, um, basically derived from the town of Mansfields. To try to give, uh, relief to local businesses, um, I picked that figure out of fifty thousand. Uh, it wasn't scientifically done, but I thought it was a starting point for discussion, um, I did have.
Did EDC indicate what they thought was an appropriate amount?
Not, not in an aggregate amount, they, they are the ones that mentioned the minimum or up to ten thousand dollars, uh, per file.
And the vetting process or whatever, um, administration of this would be through what?
Well, I explained to, uh, to the EDC when I met with them two weeks ago now, that. The ultimate decision would be made by the board of selection.
Right, they're, they're an advisory group.
That they, we would, we would rely on them reviewing the applications that we decide on. And making recommendations to us, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Their original proposal that you looked at indicated that they would decide, uh, where that went, I, I think we were in agreement that. We felt that was a responsibility of the board of, board of selection.
I agree.
I was surprised, uh, and I won't get into naming who's who, but I did talk to an employee from the town of Mansfield. Who's somewhat involved in their program and who seemed relatively su- surprised that. And they've had this program in place for over a year, very few businesses took advantage of it.
Did they say why?
No, no, they were just surprised.
Um, the, the, uh, process that they had to go through to request the funds, is that the same process we're thinking of doing?
Conceptually, yes. You know, and I think if we wanna go forward then, and, and, and that we get approval from the town. Then I think the three of us have to sit down, perhaps to somebody from EDC and just go over page by page. Um, including the application form, if it's exactly how we wanna present this.
That sounds good.
Um, radio, Bluetooth, EDC. And the crosswalk down here, I, I brought that up, asked Chris to put that on, um, we have not got firm prices, I. Somewhat of an educated guess on that, I think twenty thousand would cover that. To finally repair this crosswalk here between Trentco Lane and, um, and the Cumberland. Uh, we have, we have talked to NICOD and it is a safety, uh, situation that they feel confident. Uh, John Philcheck had indicated would be covered through our, our funds.
Could you, could you share some specifics about the safety aspect? What is, has to be done to the crosswalk?
Well, first of all, it has to work, ours hasn't.
Oh, you're saying the lights, the light has to work, is that correct?
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna see exactly what I'm, I'm talking about, you can go to Wellington. Go on Route thirty through, uh, thirty-two, where their middle school is.
Yes, I've been there.
That, those are exactly the type of crosswalk, it has a speed indicator on it, it also has flashing lights. It has buttons on either side that, that will flash those lights if somebody wants to cross, that's. that, that will flash those lights if somebody wants to cross. That's the sort of thing that I'm talking about.
That sounds good.
You know, we, we've had at least three fatalities. I'm not saying it was as a result of them crossing from Trumco or wherever, but there have been three serious fatalities there. I know in the past twenty years that I know of, probably less than that. Um.
Well, not only that, we have speeding that just goes on all the time there and having the, uh, thing that tells them what speed they're going at. Uh, is a good thing to have anyway.
It's, it's a good first step. I mean, ultimately, every time I get an ear or somebody with DOT, I'm requesting them to consider lowering the speed limit. Um, you know, you go through Yukon, they have twenty, and they say, well, it's a state road. Well, one ninety-five going through Yukon is, is a state road, and it's a twenty-five in their, their pedestrian areas. Uh, this, let's face it, is our downtown area. Uh, anyway, I'm getting on my soapbox with that. So what I'd like to have is a motion, uh, Chris has recommended a date. Uh, and I believe Dave, in your packages, the, um, a draft of a town meeting call. Is that right?
Uh, there is. Bear with me a second. I just want to find.
Chris, is that correct? You're muted.
There's a motion in here somewhere?
You're muted, Chris. Chris, you're muted. John, she's muted.
There I am. It was sent out this afternoon. It's not part of the, excuse me, it's not part of the big package. It was a separate email.
Out in an email or something?
It did.
It did?
All right. Well, what it says is that similarly to what we did the last time at our last town meeting, we like to call a special meeting on December seventh.
Uh. No, December nineteenth.
Never mind. December nineteenth.
I'll add that on to my two thousand meeting card.
December nineteenth at what, uh, what time?
Six thirty. We'll, we'll offer, I, it went real quick the last time I know, and that's any reason it wouldn't this time. And then we'll have our regular meeting that night on the nineteenth, um, at seven o'clock.
Okay, um.
And the purpose of that will be the items we just discussed.
So I have two quick questions about the items that we just discussed, and that was, um, are those the absolute up-to-date cost estimates?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make that motion.
Is it? Uh, we have a motion. It's first and second. And just an FYI, I believe Chris also sent this out. Um, taking into account those four items and the accounting we got the last time left for what we have in ARPA funds will leave us a balance. Um, and again, it's tentative, but a balance of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Okay. Out of curiosity, has Public Works asked for anything in the, uh, area of a truck or anything like that?
Um, from ARPA?
Yeah.
No. Uh, we will be convening pretty quickly a capital non-reoccurring, um, request from our departments.
Right.
And I believe Joe's got a couple of requests with that. I know he'd like a new loader. I don't know how that's going to be received this year. It's going to be a pretty tight year.
Joe's pickup came out of ARPA funds.
Yes.
Uh, the small dump truck.
Yeah, the small dump truck. I didn't know if they needed anything else. The, um, the, uh, again, with a hundred and, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand left after this, um, my concern is about dipping any further into it because of the, uh, community needs for fuel, et cetera. I don't want us to get down to the point where we can't help them.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, so again, I do make the motion.
Any more discussions? The motion that's been made and seconded on the floor. This is regarding setting a special town meeting for December nineteenth at six thirty, large conference room downstairs.
And it's for these, uh, particularly these four items?
For these four items. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
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 Approved unanimously. Thank you. Um, update on prep, item E, update on preparation of Trumco House, uh, phasing plan. Uh, I think you all should have got those emailed to you. Um, I'm a little surprised that Kay or Joan aren't joining us, but at this time, looking at nearly a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar total project on that, um, I, I, I don't, I don't see how we go to the next step on that, to be honest with you.
I don't, I don't know.
I'm interested in discussions, but I, that's an awful lot of money.
Yeah, we don't have that money if there is a way for, uh, the Historical Society or others to find grants for it. He, let's see, he was to do this in a three-phase approach?
I think it was, wasn't it four?
Five phases.
Five, he did it in four, that's fine.
Done one.
Yep.
But I remember right, phase two alone is seventy thousand. Which we would have to come up with pretty quick.
Do you know if he actually went into the building?
He didn't get a key from me.
The reason I ask is because it's filled with mold. You can ask Public Works.
Mentioned at the last meeting, I, I haven't been in there. I'm not happy to hear that, but.
Nope.
It's very possible.
So in terms of them ripping out some things, they're definitely going to have to rip them out.
You know, you got less than a thousand square feet there on, on the, uh, first floor of that building. It's just an off.
Well, I mean, I like the fact that phase two kind of deals with basically preservation.
Yeah.
Yes.
In terms of taking care of foundation issues, uh, taking care of vapor barriers that could alleviate some of the moisture issues. Uh, perimeter draining, again, getting moisture away from the, uh, buildings that could, uh, solve some of the moisture issues and some of the mold. Um.
When we get to the.
I think the plan is, is well stated and, and, and obviously knows what he's talking about. I just boiled down to that whether or not we can afford to do that.
Right. Well, we know, we, we know we can't afford to do that. So it's a matter of, uh, and maybe someone would try and make the argument to use ARPA funds for it, um, as part of something to improve or increase. What is it, uh? Uh, tourism.
And I like that.
The thing is, you have to have, you have to have the whole building there. You have to have a plan for who would be even working there to, you know, do that kind of tourism work and set some kind of consistent basis. The other thing too was that the upstairs uh, would only be for storage. It, it would not be compliant for, um, the disabled if it were to be used as an office, which is what I thought that the Historical Society wanted to use the upstairs for.
Well, I'll tell you, I had offices in that building thirty years ago plus. And even at that time, you could not use that for anything other than storage if you're lucky.
Yes. Yeah, well, it, it clearly can't be used for anything other than storage. So I don't know how, um, how this would work. Uh, just as a small aside, what is, do we have any plans for, um, the academy, Ashford Academy?
No, but I, I, my, my goal is, is to try to at least get that to a point where we can have public access that, that. I don't know if either of you have been in the academy, but I made a point a couple of months ago going through it, and it's, it's a priceless gem that we.
It is. It is, and we have groups that would be delighted to, um, hold events in there, the, uh, Arts Council.
Yeah.
I'm sure the Historical Society, um, definitely that's, that's the gem.
I, 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 I've talked to a couple of members of the Arts Council and everything. You know, they'd like to put an elevator on the building and that, and that. I, to me, that's kind of far down the road and, and we get into an affordability situation. But I'd like to get it where we can at least open those doors several weekends a year, if not more, so people can go through and, and, and appreciate the historical significance of that building. Cause it's moving just to walk through there. I mean, yeah, history has stood still in that building.
I, uh, I went and, uh, years ago, and a gentleman who had gone to school there told about how, uh,
And subpoenaed.
Well, this is, this is, this was an older guy, and I hope they recorded him because he, uh, he was talking about, you know, uh, coming and lighting the stove in the corner.
Yeah.
And, uh, coming early to do that. And also about the teacher that had a buggy whip that she used in the classroom. And what they did, the students did, is they put it behind the, uh, blackboard, dropped it down behind it.
It's probably still.
Yeah, it's probably still there. That's right.
Oh, I've heard stories about the two-seater outhouses and, you know, anyway, I know, uh.
Okay, so this one, when it comes to the Trumco House, no, we don't have the funds. Um, the, uh, I, I think that if anything, it would be exploring what kinds of funds, if, if we were going to pursue anything with it, it would be exploring what kinds of funds we can get from the state in grant, the form of grants.
Yeah. Yep. So I will, uh, I, uh, my suggestion would just pass on this, uh, take no action at this time.
Right.
All right, I'll go to item eight, new business, consideration of the two thousand twenty-three Board of Selectment meeting calendar. Uh, in your packages, you should have had a new one. This includes a, um,
Our working session.
Besides our regular, um, meeting schedule that we've been having at first and third Monday of the month, it includes, uh, in between those, a working session, regular selectments meeting on Tuesdays at ten in the morning.
How does that work for you, Roger?
I'm, I'm still relatively flexible. This retirement thing's pretty good.
I think it's a good idea. I don't know if we're going to need the mall.
Yeah, I mean, I hope we don't need a mall.
Um, I, I, I must report to you that was, what was reported to me was one of the consequences of this is that if we do Zoom on all of those meetings, the cost will be about five thousand dollars. Now, as you know, right now, we're using ARPA funding to pay for the Zoom meetings. Um, that pool will dry up before long.
Well, the, the, the fact is, is that at some point in time, we're going to have to cut over to using, um, you know, setting a budget that's related to online meetings for the town.
Yep. I still favor it. I think we're busy enough. I think it will probably take some of the pressure off. Although we've done pretty good with our regular meetings, but there are occasions when we get into rather lengthy meetings or having to pass on some, some things that we'd like to put in a little more time to, but I think it's a good idea. I think it's a sign of the times right now.
Is there anything wrong with it saying that the meetings may be held in person, virtually, or hybrid with instructions for logging in noted on the agenda? Is there, uh, uh, the fact that we're not precise?
Doesn't more or less say that though?
It says meetings may be held in person, virtually, or hybrid with instructions for logging in noted on the agenda.
That's what I just read.
Now.
Is that what it says for the meetings we held this year? I'm only asking in terms of, uh, making sure that when we're putting out, putting this out, I mean, this is kind of cast in stone once we, uh, give it to the town clerk.
Yeah. Well, one, one, I, I, yeah, I, I have no, no problem doing it the same way we've been doing it. One of the things that I think we may, because I'm still waiting from Savage to get a, uh, estimate on upgrading our facilities down in the main room to make them a little more user-friendly. But I'm thinking we may need another Owl Pro, and we set it up in our conference room across the hall. Uh.
So what I had assumed when I was sitting in your seat is that we were going to need, uh, at least, uh, we were going to need three. One for the big room downstairs, one for the selectments conference room, and one for either the small conference room, should it ever be used again down on the lower level, and/or Norton.
Norton doesn't, I've inquired about that because there, when we did our first hybrid back in the large room down, downstairs a couple of months ago now.
Yeah.
Inquired in that. Norton doesn't necessarily lend itself to the use of the Owl Pro, and I've asked for alternatives in Norton Hall. Uh, but I, I, if you're comfortable with it, I'm, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and order at least one more Owl Pro for the conference room across the hall.
Uh, I'm comfortable. I'm assuming you're using ARPA funds for that.
Yes.
So do we need that on our, our, uh, notice for our?
We have not, we have not gone to town meeting on those items before, but I certainly have no objection to doing that. Uh, to, to, to remain consistent, to put them on this agenda. For, you mean for our December nineteenth meeting?
Yeah.
I have no objection to that.
I, I kind of don't care either, either way, um, because the cost is less than, what is it, a thousand?
I, if I remember right, because I've given up guessing on what things cost nowadays, but, uh, I think it's a thousand or less.
Yeah, it was before. Uh, but you need a laptop as well.
Which we can probably use one of that one. I mean, obviously, the Board of Selectment is not going to be meeting, although it could be where we have another agency, P and Z or somebody moving, using the big room downstairs and us wanting to use this room.
Oh, yeah, we've definitely had some conflicts between meetings.
Laptop.
Yeah.
Let, let me work on that part.
Okay.
Uh, you have to make a decision on this because I have to get the agenda to Sherry first thing tomorrow morning.
Well, can we, um, Bill, you're going to need more than, okay, so you're going to need more than the owl. You're going to need a laptop. So, um, if we were estimating this, would be, we estimating like two thousand?
Put in a maximum of two thousand, an amount not to exceed two thousand.
So am, am I in a position where I can make a friendly amendment or something to the motion that we had for the town? The town meeting? I'm not sure.
You don't have to. We haven't published.
It's not.
Notice yet. The only ones who have seen the notice are you guys.
Right. I was thinking more along the lines of the motion we made to even do the notice. So, um.
Well, why, uh, why don't I do, ask for this? Ask for a motion.
Yep.
To be made to go back to, under old business item seven, item D.
So moved to, uh.
Reconsideration of the motion we made earlier.
All right. So, uh, so moved, I'd like to, uh, uh, sorry, I'm, um.
Go back, you like?
I'd like to revisit item.
Under old business, item seven, item D.
Yep. Uh, I'd like to revisit the motion that was made there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I'd like to make another motion that merely adds the two thousand, not to exceed two thousand for, um, equipment. Uh, owl slash laptop equipment, uh, for.
To complement, uh, hybrid meetings.
Yeah, hybrid means.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. All right, back to item eight, new business.
Our schedule.
Consideration of the schedule. Do I have a motion? Did I have a motion before?
So I'm just, I'm just looking at the dates again because we've got a, a number of Tuesdays.
Yeah, like every Tuesday.
I was curious about those, but are they because of holidays?
Yes.
Okay, so January seventeenth.
So it's the ten AMs we're adding on.
Yeah, the ten AMs, I was kind of, you know, just keeping that there. So the, actually, those ten AM ones are for the alternate weeks.
Correct.
So I got, just checking here. Give me a second. One.
If we could do some of them at nine AM. If we could do some of them at nine AM might be better, but I mean, ten AMs kind of. Kills a day.
You are mine? I have no problem with nine.
Yeah.
I have.
Little earlier.
Catherine?
I, I have no problem with nine.
I don't have a problem with nine.
So if we could adjust all of the uh.
Ten o'clock.
Day, daytime meetings to be nine AM. And I'm just looking, again, I'm looking at the Tuesdays for the seven o'clock's. I'm one of those people that has a hard time following it when it's centered. All of these are centered. Looks like a big snake. Um, as opposed to left justified. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept these uh, with a uh, change to. Uh, make sure that the, the daytime meetings are at nine AM. On the dates listed.
There's a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, folks. Item eight, new business, item B, EverSource tree trimming. Catherine, this is one you asked to be.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. There's a couple of them. I have been hearing from people. I'm surprised. Is there, now they're contacting me about it. Um, so EverSource is only trimming on the roads that have. Uh, wires. Okay, that have power wires, whatever. Um. Who else is doing tree trimming for the town? EverSource has their own reasons for doing their tree trimming. What about other ones for public safety?
With the equipment that we bought them over the past couple of years are doing some of the trimming. Um, example on Howard Road. Um, off the forty-four. There were a number of evergreens there that were far enough away from the poles. That we went in this year and trimmed, I think, tree, uh, three trees down. We do some that, there's absolutely no risk of involving wires or poles or whatever. That are on town roads.
So.
We do that.
Okay, what about Mansfield? Tree trimming or whatever it is.
They.
Do they?
They do some, Joe contracts them, and I understand that's been going on for years. Um. I don't know if you got my email today, Catherine.
Yes, I did.
Questions that I, I shared with. As best I knew. Joe has worked with them over the years. Um. They've worked on an emergency basis where it's fine. Uh, where sometimes if we went to ask Lynn or Lyndon, it would take weeks or months to get things done. Right now, you know, Tree Services is having some, some personnel problems. And they've been delayed on a couple of projects. They have two projects right now that Joe has told him he wants them to do. But because of the delays, I've asked Joe to touch base with them directly after the holiday. If we can't get firm dates from them, I've told him to inquire and see if Lyndon can come in and do them immediately.
All right, well, any company that we have doing business for us, we should have some kind of contract with. Even if it's a, you know, uh, you know, on, on occasion, we're gonna be using your services and this is what you're gonna be charging us or whatever.
It's never been done. It, it probably is a good idea, but it's never been done.
It is a good idea. Um, the other thing is that. You know, I know of at least one instance where I believe Mansfield. I don't know if it was Mansfield Tree Service or our own town one, cut down a tree on, oh shoot, what road was it? And left the uh, the tree, whatever. Uh, in the farmer's field. And it hasn't been moved and.
No, nobody cut that tree. I know the tree you're talking about. And it is in his field. It fell because it's dead. The tree came down. And.
Was the tree.
Reasons why our crew can't go in on that is there are several very bad trees there. Because they're dead, they can't cut them from the bottom. Because of the rot and, and not being able to judge which way they're gonna go. So they've gotta be cut from the top down. And that's one of the ones that I always mentioned to you that. Um, we've, we've told Mansfield, we want them to take care of, but we're gonna follow up with Lyndon if they can't do it.
All right, so that's gonna be, that's a safety issue.
They are safe.
There, if they're that dead and the fact I did see them.
Trees there, obviously. Uh, compromised.
But the one in the farmer's field, you know, he can't, he. Is, is our expectation, he has to keep working around it. This, I guess he uh, mentioned it or whatever in July.
Well. The funny part about that, what I was told. Was he refused our crew to go into that field to remove that initially. I think he's changed his. His mind now, cause it didn't make any sense to me at all.
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't think he refused the crew to go in. In fact, he's been trying to get this done since July. So, um. All right. And then, um, I saw something you had sent out about uh, some other locations in town. That where we had power outages and the people, uh, the person who was complaining about it was saying that. You know, the, uh, clearly the trees are a factor in that. And.
That, we're talking about Horse Hill Road.
Yeah, there's two roads.
Explain to that complaining individual, and we have maps here in the office he could look at. The entirety of Horse Hill Road from North Road past Summer Lane. Is scheduled and is a priority for, for them to go into. They're also gonna be doing James Road, which is in that area.
Yeah.
As a result of that person's inquiries. I can't, I, I can't agree with the term he used. Uh, it's like living in a third world country, but uh.
No, I don't.
It's not, it's not quite that bad.
No, but if you're out there living there and you're having the power outages, um, that's a.
EverSource today and asked them for their history. On the pot, cause they had, by state law, they have to keep a track of outages on what roads. And ask them to look into it. And what they're also gonna do is send a crew out there if. If not this week, the first part of next week, and check all of those. Um, circuit breakers. Uh, because they feel there may be some sort of a fault there, but they're gonna follow up on that.
Oh, you might wanna let that homeowner know. On that.
Doesn't live in a third world country, or know that they're.
Uh, know that there's, you know, some action needed by EverSource.
I was being facetious, I apologize.
Um, and as far as getting that uh. Tree or whatever it is out of that farmer's field, it would be a good idea if we did that. And but you're saying that the other trees are making it so you can't?
Um. I wouldn't want our guys going in there under those trees without taking care of a couple of those other trees first.
So you're saying we would contract to have Lyndon or Mansfield?
We have advised Mansfield and been asking them since July to take care of that. And I told Joe. We either get a commitment by Monday on that, or we go elsewhere and we get it done immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Ready to move on?
Uh, I think.
I will tell you, as long as we're talking about complaints about trees. I got the opposite to that. I got a call today about eight twenty from a resident on Oak Lane. Said he had a tree come down at seven o'clock this morning on Oak Lane. So he was having trouble getting to work. He called Highway Crew. They came out, trimmed the tree, removed the, the trunk and everything from the road by eight o'clock this morning, so.
Very good.
We don't get a lot of compliments, but we said he really appreciated them being right on the ball and doing that.
Good, good.
All right, Camper Lane, you asked that that be on the agenda?
Yes, we have a letter that we got from.
You do?
Tom, I forgot his last name. Doesn't come to mind. The uh, I'm not sure what status is on Camper Lane. I know that uh, when I was sitting in your seat. We did, uh, we walked the area. We ultimately discovered that the runoff. Was going into the lake. From um, that area, when in fact, originally, we were saying that, oh no, that wasn't happening. So, what is, what are the improvements that still need to be made? I don't have the report from the. Uh, person from NCOG, their engineer.
Um, I think if you look on page fifty-two of the package. You should have a letter.
I'm sorry, they're not numbered that one.
I think you should have a letter.
I have the letter, but I don't have the report, right?
It's a letter.
Yeah, well, so there was a, there was a report done by the engineer.
There, there were, as I understand it, Catherine, from the last time you walked that road, well.
I did.
Visit you said you made a year or so ago. Um, it has been improved, the drainage, uh, the receptacles have been improved somewhat. There was a meeting convened, I wanna say in September. And our engineer was there, our Illinois Wetlands Officer was there.
Yep.
Our chairman of our Wetlands Commission was there. This gentleman, Tom, was there. And they walked through and they basically found the road was in pretty good shape. Uh, with, with. Just three exceptions. There are two driveways that need drain piping underneath the driveway. One of them, we had installed at one time and the owner had taken out. And Joe is gonna be scheduling as soon as we can to put those pipes in both, under both driveways again. And then.
Tom.
From our, our Wetland Officer earlier, well, late last week. There, one of the drainage trenches, he wants sloped another way. It's sloped. It's not sloped properly. Those, and, and, and the engineer from the COG agrees with that. Those are the only things that we feel are needed on that. I, I know there are some residents in that area. That would like that road paved. Um, that's not gonna happen.
And I didn't, I actually, because I haven't seen the report with the recommendations. Uh, I couldn't tell if people were still saying it needed to be paved. It was more a concern about. It sounds like these uh, two driveways. And the drainage. So when will the work be done on the uh? Two driveways and the drainage?
As soon as possible. I can't give, I can't give you a date.
Anything rough.
The ground doesn't freeze. They're gonna try to get it at, at this time. If not, it's gonna be first thing in the spring. Both our Wetlands uh, Officer and Lenny told me that what they observed when they did the site visit. Uh. They were impressed with.
It was nice that Lenny went out there. That's good. Okay, I, that's uh, was just to find out when they were, those improvements were gonna be made.
Yeah.
Uh, the paving.
I just worry that when we say improvements, there are people down there that think we're gonna be paving that road and. I don't wanna give anybody false expectations at this time. No intentions of doing that.
Do we have an estimate of what it would take to pave that road?
I'm told several hundred thousand dollars. And we would only be able to pave it to the Eastford Line. And then the rest of that road is gonna be dirt. It makes no sense.
So I know that what Tom was asking about was ARPA funds, thinking that. Um, any work that could be done there could be paid for with that. And I am concerned about us running out of ARPA funds.
That, and, and, and the repairs that both the in, the engineer and our Wetlands Officer and our. Chairman of our Wetlands Committee and our Highway Forum and it told us are minimum expense.
Okay, and, and again, the engineer felt that that would be adequate, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think you'll see the letter in your package where it reiterates that.
Yeah, I've seen, I saw the letter. I, like I said, I didn't see the report, so I didn't know spec, some of the specifics.
Okay.
Um, and I have asked for a copy of the report. Okay, uh, thank you. I just wanna make sure that we have some kind of rough timetable for doing anything.
We have a rough timetable.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, under new business, item D, reviewed uh. Twenty twenty-two steep funding per, uh, procedures recommended by the uh, Ashford Auditors. Chris, you wanna comment on this? I think at a previous meeting, we said we thought we were gonna have to have a town meeting and. And I think we found out it was clarified by the auditors that we don't need that. Go ahead, Chris.
The steep grant wasn't announced until after the budget was passed. And submitted, so the five hundred thousand dollars. That we're getting from steep was not included as a capital project. Um, the plan is that Southworth Drive and Pompey Road project will be done. In spring, as soon as the um, paving plants open. And we need money in place to be able to pay those bills. So the auditors are suggesting that we borrow money from the town. Repay it when we get the reimbursement from steep.
And we are confident we're gonna get the reimbursement from steep?
That's been confirmed. The, the, the grant approval for the five hundred thousand has been confirmed. By, from OPM.
So, what, if we're borrowing five hundred thousand. From the town, you're taking it out of the undesigned fund balance?
General fund, yes.
That would be undesigned, undesigned, um. Or you create an account with that. So I'm, I'm looking at it right here. So. I can't imagine. That we could do anything like that without having. A town meeting.
Auditors tell us we don't because it's not gonna be an expenditure.
But it is.
Gonna just.
We will, we will.
Funds, once we finish the pro, pro, once we finish the project, those funds will be available to us. To then transfer into the undesigned fund or fund balance, general fund.
Okay, so, um, on, on that one, on that one, I don't agree.
All right.
That we've already approved.
Okay.
We approved that at a town meeting already.
Yep.
Yeah, but we only approved a hundred thousand, correct?
Correct.
All right, but if we're taking five hundred thousand out to pay the bills while we're doing this. That's five thou, five hundred thousand dollars coming out of our undesigned fund. So.
But it's being reimbursed.
That is something. And, and I don't know how long it takes to get the reimbursement from steep. Okay, but it would mean that we would not have the money back in our undesigned fund. Until we complete the project and steep. Gave us some money.
Chris, did you include the uh, the memo we got from the?
I'm looking right at it.
I did.
I'm looking at it. It says. The general fund isn't, this is what the, the CPA said. The general fund isn't going to be appropriating an additional five hundred thousand, since it's in, just in advance. Until the grant funds come in. But what you need to understand here is that we're depleting. Our undesigned balance by five hundred thousand dollars while this project's going on. Which means it's not available for other things, if it needs to be. So that's half a million dollars. So I don't agree with what the CPA is saying here in terms, in terms of this. He's. Advancing the funds. Okay, so I don't know how much is in the undesigned fund balance right now. Was it probably about maybe four million?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm not gonna guess. Chris, I don't know, you were commenting, but you're muted. You're still muted. Chris, you're muted. You're muted.
If you go to the Board of Finance and ask for appropriation for the fund balance, you would be doing the same thing, depleting the fund balance. And then when you get the reimbursement. It goes back in the fund balance.
We don't have to pick, we don't have to pick any action on this tonight, Catherine. Like we'd ask for better clarification. From the auditors, I can do that.
Actually, I wanna make sure you have, um, the Board of Finance on copy for this stuff. Because they need to understand the background to it. The uh, having been on the Board of Finance for all those years, I would be really loathe to. The, uh, having been on the board of finance for all those years, I would be really loathe to. Say we were advancing the money. In the, in the hopes of getting the repayment in, that we would be down a half a million dollars until we got that money. Without having a town meeting, anybody really knowing about it.
Well, we got plenty of time to research this, cause the project's not gonna start until July at the earliest. And we've got.
Very good.
Hundred thousand dollars already to go towards starting that project.
Very good, thank you.
Materials are in place right now that we're gonna be, uh, part of our contribution is, is. Materials are in place at the transfers, at the highway routes are ready.
Right, we're also talking about going for, um, when are we going for the, uh. Monies for the town school roof?
I don't have a timeline. It's, we, we got the P and Z passed their resolution. On council told us they were, they were on board with that, that was fine. Now we have to get it from the board of finance. I don't have a specific timeframe for you.
Yeah, it changes our, the availability of money in our, um, general fund, if you will. Uh, when we have this thing going against it. So, um, I didn't know if that could somehow affect our, uh, whether, uh, uh, extremely be our credit rating. Or whether it would affect what we get for, um, bonding for the school project.
Yeah, I don't think so, but it's a legitimate question to ask.
Thanks.
Ready to move on?
Yep.
Item E, Ashford School Oil Tank Replacement, uh, Project Bits. Discussion and possible, uh, action on tank purchase. Um, I have not got the particulars. I've been working on it for. Uh, past several days with the contractor and the distributor. Uh, I will tell you that our highway supervisor is adamantly opposed to us hiring. Or purchasing the tank directly, uh, because he said we, by doing that. We take on certain responsibilities of liability for the guarantee and everything on that. I posed that question to the, uh, contractor that we intend on contracting with. I'm still waiting for answers and trying to find out exactly. At one time, I heard we could save eleven thousand dollars by doing this. I'm now, I'm now hearing it's not gonna be that much, so I'll report back to the board. Um, I don't think I have to wait to report to you what I, what I hear on final figures. And look for recommendation. Once I get those figures in, I intend on convening a, a meeting with Joe and with the. Superintendent and the chairman, if she can make it, and just go over what we're gonna do. I, right now, my gut feeling, unless it's somewhere near that eleven thousand dollars. Is to go ahead and let the contractor order the tank, but I, I don't have enough information right now.
All right, and we had made a motion about this in a previous meeting, so, um. We'll just let it ride until we find out more information.
Yeah, I think the motion was for me to go ahead and proceed and get the information. We're still doing that.
It was accepting the contract.
Yeah, well, the contract we've accepted.
Yeah.
With, 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 with who's gonna be doing the installation.
But how the tank.
The, the only, the only caveat to that contract, and it was the only one of the three that bid. Was gave us the option of ordering the tank itself. That's, that's what I'm researching, because we have, all had the impression we'd save a considerable amount of money.
I remember.
So.
And that wasn't the reason we went with.
Correct.
Original bit.
Correct.
That was the only reason.
It was not the only reason.
No, not because we could get a.
I mean, we had consensus from the building committee and we all agreed in reviewing the bids, the. Service station seemed to be, and everybody had good experience with them and.
Uh, okay, and bear with me, I have a difficulty hearing Roger.
Oh, sorry.
Back in the other part of the room, so that's why I said that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item F, Board Committee and Commission Appointments. Uh, Recreation, we have not seen anything yet, Conservation Commission. Nothing yet, Economic Development. Nothing, Commission on Asian, nothing yet. Um, inland wetland water course. Nothing yet. I guess we have nothing on that.
Wow, we have a bunch of openings.
We do, we do. Uh, item G, Tax Refunds. I believe Chris had sent you in your package.
List, yeah, three, three, uh, three.
There are three, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to, to have the refunds for the three on the list.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I assume you're citing the statute, uh, Mr. Phillips?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Remarks for the good? Hearing none, items for the next Board of Selectment meeting?
Um, Mr. Panic's, uh. Uh, request, he's gonna be providing us with the information, so we wanna put that on the agenda.
Absolutely. I'll take the motion.
Oh, uh, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor and second it, it is eight fifty-six. Thank you.